Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the very first school board meeting of 2025. We'd like to start, actually, we're going to open the meeting with the pledge of allegiance. So if everyone would rise.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Now it moves to a call to order. Carrie, when you are ready, can you please call?
Mr. Braden.
Here.
Mrs. Hopkemeyer.
Here.
Ms. McKnight.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Stamm.
Here.
All right. Today's our organizational meeting, so a little bit extra stuff done at the start of every year. What we'll start with is a nomination of board president. Do I have any nominations for board president?
I would like to nominate Kyle.
Mike Stamm nominate for myself. Do I have any other nominations?
No.
No? All right.
I was just going to second that.
All right, we have a second. Carrie, can you please call rule?
Mr. Braden.
Yes.
Mrs. Hopkemeyer.
Yes.
Ms. McKnight.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Stamm.
Yes.
All right, now we move to nomination of vice president. Do I have any nominations?
I will nominate Jeff Braden.
And do I have a second? Second? Do I have any other nominations for vice president?
It's a second, I'm sorry.
Shall it? Shall it? Carrie, when you are ready, can you please call rule?
Sorry, bear with me one second.
Nope, you're fine, take that.
Mr. Braden.
Yes.
Mrs. Hopkemeyer.
Yes.
Ms. McKnight.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Stamm.
Yes.
Okay.
And now for our host?
Yes.
Where would you like us?
Why don't you guys come over and stand in front of the camera and I'll stand offside so I don't block you?
You guys stop, you're too kind. All right, next we'll move on to establishing our board meeting agenda for dates and times for 2025. I know there's been a lot of questions, comments of changing possibly dates, times, things like that. If anyone would like to make a comment of that. I know possibly of changing them all to nights, which again, whatever majority would like to do, I'm okay with. I know we did switch to some mornings, some nights to have people who were not able to make nights have an opportunity to come to a meeting or two. And Mr. Herman, would you like to discuss the regularity of what we have?
What you have in front of you is just a draft of, for what we currently have, the dates that correlate with that, with this coming year. Again, they're on Monday nights. I know there've been discussions of, you know, like even tonight being Tuesday, but those are the dates that correlate with the dates that we had this past year. Just as a, as a starting point, as a draft for you.
This is what you emailed out a couple of weeks ago, right?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, and I looked at this to try to get as little of interaction as possible with other governing bodies, local governing bodies. And it looked like we were running into a few Water Bill meetings, but Water Bill has meetings twice a week, or twice a month.
Yes.
So I think that, I think that should be okay.
Okay.
So I was okay with, with the.
And I know that you checked on White House also, did it?
Yeah, there was one, there was one meeting with White House.
Okay, okay.
Their Tuesdays, yeah.
Yep.
I think we did change the November board meeting.
Correct.
Normally it's the second Monday of the month is what kind of is the protocol here, but we did move the November meeting just because of Capitol Conference, so.
And then usually the summers are the mornings, obviously, for just, those would be the, if somebody can't make them or whatnot, for nights, they at least had that option. But if it is of the board majority that they would like to move them all to nights, we can do that as well.
I know, I talked to Lindsay about it and she's rather in favor of the night ones as well. I don't, like I said, I'm retired, it's not so much for me, you guys all work. I know you said sometimes that's a conflict with you getting to work on the, in the morning.
Yeah, I guess I didn't think about people that maybe can't come to eve, they can't come to the evening and they could only come in the morning, then I would definitely, I can, I'm good with that.
Okay. So you'd like to leave summers in morning for that, that would be, would we say two to three?
Yeah, and that's fine. Like I said, I don't work, it's not, it's not for me.
Yeah.
I know people can watch the re, the re-video of it, but if they have said that they would like to come to a meeting and they can come in the morning, I'm okay. I just, for me, I'm pretty flexible.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, can we pull the audience real quick? I appreciate these guys coming in. If, if anyone in the audience really cares, morning or.
In the summer.
Or, just during the summer.
They don't.
Would you like us to take your nights in the summer? Or would you like to be off at night?
In all fairness, administrators aren't required to attend our summer meetings.
No, but, but they.
But you guys always show up.
We appreciate when people show up and.
So, so let's, mornings or nights?
In the summer.
The summer only.
I feel like people would be more apt to be able to come in the evening than the morning, like at eight, because when they start work at nine, I don't know.
You'd think, but yeah, that's, that's what we've done before was just you had that option.
Yeah.
Summer evenings are pretty busy as well.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So we'll stick with summers as.
As, as in the mornings, that's fine, okay.
And everything else we can stick to.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Okay, so all others will be six, other than the June ninth. Okay, so others will be six, other than the June ninth, June twenty-fifth, July sixteenth.
Wait a minute, Kevin, you said six, six-thirty, you mean?
That, we did six-thirty tonight, we typically do six o'clock, so did.
Okay, six o'clock would be the general meetings.
Yes.
Now, which of the days would be the morning ones then, what dates?
It would be the June ninth, the June twenty-fifth, the July sixteenth, and the August fourth.
And those would start at eight AM?
They've done previously.
Yes, and the July is a as-needed meeting.
Yes, two of those are as-needed, so, you know, it's not necessary that we would be having those. It would be due to probably hiring or, you know, you know, last-minute things, that we would use those, utilize those.
And this is the initial, we're required to put a calendar out.
Yes.
We do obviously change these as needed, you just have to put the notice out that you're changing or adding a meeting, so it's not.
It's not set in stone.
Yeah.
All right, good deal.
Look at us.
Look at us, there we go. I don't think the rest will be as hotly contested, but item E is your standardized authorizations.
We do have this committee.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That's further down.
Yep, that's further down. Our item F, school attorney services, G, membership of the Board of Education, H would then be our committee assignments. Lindsay, I know you had questions, did yours get answered?
Yes.
For, perfect.
Yes.
And yes, our drafts from our committee assignments, I believe no one had asked for any changes this year, so that's, we'll all stay the same. So if any other further questions, comments?
If someone else wants to be the alternative delegate, I forgot, I forgot.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody else would like that. Yeah, if somebody else would like to do that, sit in the three-hour meeting, I'd be okay.
I'll be there in November, don't you worry.
I'd be okay letting someone else do that.
All right. All right, but if not, no questions, comments, or anyone taking Lindsay's extremely.
Generous offer.
Generous offer.
You don't want to do it anymore?
Need a motion. You won't have to do it next time, I promise, I'll be there in November. If not, I need a motion to approve items A through H.
So am I keeping Lindsay on for now?
For now.
Okay.
For now.
Okay. We're good. Great.
Kyle, I saw move.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Jeff seconds, Carrie, when you're ready.
Mr. Braden.
Yes.
Mrs. Hopkemeyer.
Yes.
Ms. McKnight.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
And Mr. Stamm.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, item number four is Board of Education minutes of last month's and last year's. If there are any question, comments, concerns of last month's minutes, if not, need a motion to approve.
I'll motion to approve.
Lindsay motions, do I have a second?
I will.
Shelley seconds, Carrie, when you're ready.
Mr. Braden.
Yes.
Mrs. Hopkemeyer.
Yes.
Ms. McKnight.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Stamm.
Yes.
All right, item number five is treasurer's report, Carrie, when you're ready.
Thank you, first item on the agenda is to approve the monthly financial reports for December 2024. We are halfway through a fiscal year, and if you look at some of these reports, such as the cash sum, or you would notice our general fund is negative. And so that means, it doesn't mean our bank account's negative, it just means when I divide all the funds out, and that basically falls because in January, January and February, we'll start receiving all of our real estate tax payments again. So it happens every year, but sometimes when that's caught, some people are like, whoa. And it is a lot to look at, you know, when you see a general negative fund balance, and, but it is common unfortunately, but that's just, all the funds are pooled together, so it's still okay, but it's, you know, according to by fund, it is negative at the present time. So under item B is to approve the donation that we had, we had twenty-eight books received from a former Anthony Wayne student, Shelby Harrington, and these were reviewed by our media specialist and then shared amongst the buildings that she felt that they were most suitable for. So we are very appreciative of those. Item C is the Ohio Education Policy Institute membership, this is fifteen hundred dollars a year, it hasn't changed. It's probably like another one of the, the Alliance for High Quality Education, and I just referenced this because Lindsay had asked the difference, and it's one of those that I sometimes think, you know, do we really need to join? But then I look at, like, for instance, what we're going through, and this is a, a group that supports constitutional policies that have an impact on school finance. So like the twenty mil floor, the House Bill nine-twenty, you know, state funding proposals, how's that going to impact? And, you know, they're the ones that research and analyze things. And especially, it seems like it's more focused towards the high-wealth school districts, because we're the ones that, you know, receive less state aid, and so. And I feel like as soon as we went, joined, you know, it might not be, something would go wrong, and then I would feel like, really, for fifteen hundred dollars? But I am wanting to look at everything, so, but I would recommend that we renew the membership for this year for that organization. The last is an abatement fund, you guys have already re, or approved the abatement that we actually had, but since they're billed a year behind, this is the first time I've billed, NBK, which is actually Kaufman Engineering. And so I'm just establishing the fund, because we did send all of our abatement invoices out on January third, which was late. I actually had an email from Dana today asking where our invoice was, and if they could help us calculate how much they owe, which I thought was really nice, and she sent me what we sent last year, and sent them, I told her everything went out on the third. We did not get rates until December thirtieth from the county auditor, so, and that was just so I could have the commercial and industry rate to bill out. Normally, I bill those in December, they're typically due, I bill thirty days prior to the due date, so I'd like to have them out, because they're due like taxes on January thirty-first, but they are in the mail. And then along the lines of rates and values and all that good stuff, I wanted to share a few things that I've been able to pull together with our finances when it comes to real estate tax. I don't have the current year, when I say current year, it's twenty-four fiscal, well, we're in fiscal year twenty-five, calendar year twenty-five, but taxes are being paid for twenty-four. So I don't have the detail for the current year as far as breakdown between res, ag, commercial, and industry, but I have them by category. So our current Class One, which is residential and agriculture, for last year, so for twenty-three payable and twenty-four, was basically one billion, one hundred and forty-four million dollars. This is residential and agricultural property values. The new value is one billion, four hundred and ninety-five million. That's a thirty-point-six-eight percent increase. Class Two is commercial and industry, this increased, last year it was one hundred and thirty-nine million, five hundred thousand, I'm rounding the extra numbers on there. This year it increased to one million, one hundred, wait a minute, did I say that wrong? It was, I did.
I think, I think you said, said the first, the Class One wrong.
Yeah, class, class, no, Class One, I said right, Class Two is what I'm going to say wrong, I started to say wrong. It, it was one hundred and thirty-nine million, five hundred thousand, it is now one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred, seventy-nine million, three hundred. So one hundred and seventy-nine million, so that was a twenty-eight-point-four-nine percent increase. Interesting, we've talked about Nexus for some time, and even though I haven't gotten an answer to share any detail, our tangible personal utility, or public utility personal actually went from eighty million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand to sixty million, eight hundred and sixteen thousand. So that's a twenty-four-point-six-two percent reduction, so all that together is overall about a thirty-four and a half percent increase. Our district valuation went from, and that's taking all those numbers and adding them together, it used to be one billion, three hundred and sixty-four million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, and it is now one billion, seven hundred and thirty-five million, two hundred and fourteen thousand. That is an increase of three hundred and seventy million, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. That is not going to be an increase to the school, but that is how the twenty-nine and a half percent average increase from the Lucas County Auditor has impacted Anthony Wayne. So you can understand why people are complaining. However, I will share, there's so many things that we discussed going into the levy and then post-levy, but with the levy failing, the district is now as anticipated at the twenty mil floor. And that is per the U.S. Constitution, so they are paying taxes based on the law now. It's not because they were voted, it's, it's basically the law at this point, because as values go up, millage goes down. So our millage has reduced significantly over, I would say, the last six years, we've seen some big jumps. Our last, the biggest increase we ever saw was in twenty-two, and that was a hundred and forty-five million dollars. So I can understand the frustration and the concern our taxpayers have, but the value of homes in our district, I mean, there's, there's still selling at the high dollar. It's just unfortunate, and it adds a lot of, you know, stress on some families. But as, in, in looking at, this is the information, I don't have this concrete from the county auditor, and I do apologize, but this has been my story since September thirtieth, so it's still consistent. But, so basically, what I can tell, looking at it, so a mil, so when we were on the ballot in November for two-point-four-two mils, it was two, or it was our previous, our valuation at one billion, three hundred and sixty-four million, a mil generates one million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand. So if you take that number times two-point-four-two, it comes out to roughly three-point-three million dollars. Well now, it's a, it looks like we fell below the floor, and they had to increase us back up one-point-nine-nine-nine-nine-nine numbers. So if you take that, our current effective millage now of one billion, three, or excuse me, seven hundred and thirty-five, or one million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, times the one-point-nine-nine, it calculates that we should receive around three-point-four, three-point-six million dollars. So it's not that we're that far ahead, and the most factual piece of information I can share is, I always refer to the emergency levy that was passed in two thousand and three. It was generated, or excuse me, it was passed to generate three million dollars, and it was four-point-eight-five mils. Going into the levy, it was still collecting three million dollars at two-point-three-five mils. Now, even in the given situation, it is still collecting three million dollars, and it's one-point-seven-seven mils. We also had point-eight mil of bond levy roll-off, so there has been a lot of give and take. Our concern was, does, is Nexus already on here? And it is, it was confirmed this week that it was on here, but the, the increase that we're paying is because our values have increased, so our millage has dropped below the twenty mil floor. You can't be below the twenty mil floor, so it appears that they've had to basically collect two additional mils to generate, or to get us up to the twenty mil floor, and that's where we'll see that increase, and that's where I assume it's going to be somewhere between three-point-four, three-point-six million dollars. I don't have anything factual on that, but that's basically the simple math formula that I see, and I would just, I always like to have someone say, yes, that's correct, but. So the other thing that was kind of interesting is when I did bill out all the abatements, last year I billed out for five hundred thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars worth of abatements. Well, commercial values increased differently, even though we still had an increase, we had a couple of abatements fall off, added one, but this year, you know, for instance, I'll reference Dana, because I just mentioned them earlier. Last year we billed them at sixty-three thousand, four hundred and ten dollars, this year with the new values and new effective millage for commercial and industry, which dropped six-point-five mils. They got a discount, and their bill is fifty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight, I shouldn't use that discount term, I'm just saying, that they're now saving money, because as the values have dropped, the millage has dropped, and so they're paying less. But this is handled a little differently, this is through a school donation agreement, it's just the current effective commercial and industry rate times what the value is on Ares. And I print all of that out and provide that to them when I send the bills out, so there's no question, so. I'll continue to make efforts, I did have a little bit of an attitude today, or over the last couple of weeks, but then I reached out to my other Lucas County Treasurers, and no one else has received their rates and their values. So I am thankful that I was able to get my, get them in my possession, so, so I guess it's not all bad.
Carrie, did, did they give you any indication when that was coming from the auditors, when you got a little bit strong?
The only thing that we'll see, there's only six months left to the year, so it's, that we're only going to see maybe half of that potential increase of three-point-four, we might three, see like, you know, one and a half, or one-point-five, one-point-seven million this year, not really sure. I do know that, and that made me think of Nexus, you know, they were supposed to have some settlement, and everything was done, and a lot of, a lot of treasures are, you know, sitting kind of like, we need the money. But they'll, they are not accepting advance requests for any Nexus money that's owed to the districts either, it will be paid out when, when the time comes, so.
You can receive a January payment though.
Yes, our first advance, I already know is going to be, I believe it's Friday, August sixteenth, thank goodness, January is a three-pay month for us of all months. So yes, I will get our first advance, I will probably receive two advances before our final settlement comes in March, so. But I, I would be hopeful, I have requested information as far as what increase we can expect between, you know, now and then, because we have a lot going on, and it would just be nice, like, simple thing like updating the five-year forecast, and, you know, just simple things in life.
Yes.
So.
So at this point, you're waiting for the check to come in to see how much the check is?
Well, I'm just waiting them, for them to send me the settlement.
Yeah.
So I'll be able to see, well, they'll send me an advance, which is just an email saying that they're wiring this much money.
Okay.
So it's still going to be a little bit before I get the final settlement to know how much it increased, but I had made a request of the auditor's office if they could provide me with that information, just due to our financial situation.
Okay.
Simple answer, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, so we didn't, you know, we didn't pass the levy, which we knew that if we didn't, due to the twenty mil floor, we would still see that money, but it's not like we're getting, you know, a lot more than what we were asking, it's just unfortunate, because it's the way it's being imposed on the taxpayer.
Yes.
So.
But it is fairly close to what we estimated, basically, that the story we were trying to explain and shared to everybody, that, you know, we're pretty close to what the estimate was.
And I just use this as an example, I'm not saying that, you know, if we would go on the ballot now, let's say for March or May, whatever, to generate three-point-three million, it would be one-point-nine mils instead of two-point-four-two mils, because that valuation is higher. So a mil now generates, you know, three hundred million more than it did at one time.
But we're not going on the ballot.
No, no, we're not even, we haven't even talked about it.
I, I didn't want to really even share that, I'm just trying to make it so it's understandable how this all works out.
Any further questions for Carrie? Anything else to add to your report?
Nope.
Perfect. Do I have a motion to approve the report for Carrie?
I will move.
Mike moves, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Shelley seconds, Carrie, when you're ready.
Mr. Braden.
Yes.
Mrs. Hopkemeyer.
Yes.
Ms. McKnight.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Stamm.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moves us to item number six on our agenda, is superintendent's educational report.
All right. Well, I would like to begin by thanking you, January is Board Appreciation Month. As we go into that, I just want to share just a couple of words with you. I'm sure that many of you have seen, when we've been into my office and stuff, the four words that I have in there, growth, grace, gratitude, and give. Those are words that I have on the board, because those are words that I kind of like to keep focused on as I, as I do my work. So tonight, I wanted to kind of share a little bit of how I believe that those words impact you and, as individuals and as the board. You know, I've been able to witness firsthand the growth that we have seen in each of you, as we. As we started this time last year, four of you were being, doing, taking the oath. Three of you were brand-new to the position. And I believe that over that year, over this year, we have grown immensely as a team. I think we have grown immensely as individuals, and I just really appreciate that. I also appreciate your ability to approach the issues that we do have, and that we, you know, you do it with thoughtfulness, and I believe that you also do it with grace. You care about those that you serve, and I think the thing that shows the most is that you believe in your commitment that you've made to serve the community, and I think you should take great pride in that. You understand the importance of showing gratitude. I think for the, you know, you're grateful for the trust that the community has placed in you. I think also that you're very grateful for the work that the district does, that the staff, that, you know, what they accomplish each and every day. I know that you're very appreciative of that, and the gratitude you show to them for that, I think, is, makes it very valuable for you as board members. I also know that you're also very grateful and show a lot of gratitude for the support that we receive from the community. As we shared, we may not have passed the levy, but we still have individuals that support this district and are very proud of this district, and I know that you're grateful for them for that. And then I guess what I would say that I admire the most is how much you give. Your time, your energy, and a lot of your heart. So I appreciate that. The demands of this role are very immense. I don't think that a lot of people realize what your roles are until you're actually in them. And the work that you do, you don't do it for recognition. I think that you really do it for the desire to make a meaningful difference to, to others, and to the school, to our students, to the community, and appreciate that greatly. So I just guess I wanted to share with you that, as it is Board of Education Recognition Month, I, I want to know that it's been a privilege to work with you. I appreciate all that you do, and on behalf of the district, we are very thankful to have you as our board members. So we do have a certificate for you.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. I know that's exciting.
Thank you, sir. So nice.
Thank you.
We also need to get a picture of that.
Okay. So we'll also get a picture then, at the end.
Holding your certificate.
Holding our certificates. So that actually is all that I had for presentations tonight. Thought it was important to make you the focus, and so...
Thanks.
The next part...
Really quick, you've made it a joy to, to serve on the board. You've met, you've been just like a breath of fresh air, and have made it just truly an honor, and so enjoyable. So a lot of maybe what you see in us has a lot to do with the leadership that you are setting forth in the district, so thank you.
Thank you, absolutely.
And I also want to say that I feel so comfortable if I text you, or I call you, or I email you. You get back right away, you're very involved. I feel that's something that I was hoping to find, and that's, that's who you are.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to talk about our textbook adoption. I know that our curriculum committee met on the textbook adoption in Section B, so I wanted to give you the opportunity to say if anything you'd like to share. And then also, if Mr. Connor has anything that he'd like to share about that process, give him that opportunity as well.
Well, I was thrilled to look at the workbook. You know, having been a teacher of reading and writing for thirty-five years, this is quite important to me. And this workbook, which is really going to be a portfolio when these kids finish this workbook, they can see from the beginning to the end how their writing has improved in the spaces. And actually, what Mr. Connor said, that actually putting pen to paper, or pencil to paper, so important for these kids when they're first learning how to write, that magical transformation. It's wonderful. And when I read to the White House elementary kids today, which was a delight, I spoke with Mr. Rhodes for a few minutes, and he, we talked about the rigor of that program, and what these children have to pass in terms of the tests, and how this workbook aligns with the state testing. And something that you said, I, I've been thinking about all day, because he asked me, have you seen those state tests? I have not for years. So I wondered if somehow we can have, like, a look at those, because I would like to see how tough they are, and math as well. Because I don't think any of us have seen those state tests for a long time. And I would imagine they're pretty tough, if I, if that workbook is any indication. But I'm thrilled with the, with the Wonders series. I think it's great, I think it's great.
Yeah, and we were, they were already using Wonders, I believe. And then, did you say they also use it in fifth and sixth grade? And so that was just nice, to have the continuity, and they moved from primary over to middle school. Yes.
For about the last decade, this is an updated edition. We did do a, you know, we had a surge, teachers had the opportunity to look at a couple of different, several different publishers. We had some opportunities on one of our PD days, it was some presentations from three different publishers. We had a steering committee, so throughout a series of meetings and whatnot. At our last steering committee meeting, which was on December tenth, it was kind of a consensus that they want to move to Wonders. I think one of the, one of the nice things about it is that for our teachers, especially in the K-four, where they've had a lot going on the last, let's say, four years or so, there is a level of familiarity with Wonders. So a lot of the stories and things are the same, but obviously, they've made updates, because we have to, for the science of reading legislation, this is our year. We have to, we have to update to meet that legislative requirement for the state. So we're kind of taking care of a lot of things, I feel good about it. I think it'll be a good update for kids, and again, the teachers having that level of familiarity should be a pretty soon transition.
And it's also for the community to know that this does come out of our permanent improvement funds, not the operating funds, because these will be around for a while. And I do appreciate Mr. Connor, who said that they examine it every year. They don't want to get into a contract where they're stuck with a book they don't need anymore. I think that's a great idea, so that's, I'm, I'm all for that as well.
Yes, same kind of concept with this, that there's a student work text.
Yes.
I like to do those purchases year-to-year, instead of jumping into like a six-year contract that you're, you're then stuck. And actually, with the science of reading, the state did provide some money for this update. So we've had that, so that will, that will cover a pretty good portion of this as well.
That's awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
Awesome.
All right, and item C, I just have the recommendation for four students, to recommend them for early graduation. They've met the requirements, but they will still graduate with the class. They'll be considered graduates of the class of twenty-twenty-five, but they'll be graduating early, so they won't be in class the rest of the, for the second semester.
Awesome. Any questions, comments for Mr. Herman? If not, need a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
Lindsay motions, do I have a second? Shelley, you're my second. Carrie, when you're ready.
Mr. Baden?
Yes.
Mrs. Happamire?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stamm?
Yes.
Moving on to item number seven, Superintendent's Personnel Agreement.
All right, you'll notice resignations and retirements. I would like to recognize Pam Frankfather. She is retiring after many years of service. I know that she taught my daughter in the sixth grade, and so I know she's been very dedicated, and I will also share with you that she has been on many trips to camp. She was in charge of camp for a long time, and always has attended that with them. So she'll be missed, but we're very excited for her. And so we have that. Next, we have our employment, and you will notice that we do have a new bus driver, which we're always excited about.
Absolutely.
Which I do want to commend Teresa. She has done an excellent job of recruiting people, and we really have done well this year about having the positions to, you know, filled, and have people to be able to do the positions. We have an intervention specialist, that is a new position, that'll be at White House, and that is due to numbers in special education. It's an intervention specialist. And so we have those. Next, you'll have our substitutes. I want to thank Dr. Contact. He's worked hard to continue to build that group of individuals in order to come in and do the jobs that are so necessary throughout the district, so there's not, you know, any kind of disruption in the student day or in the different departments that we have individuals in. So we have that, and then you'll notice at the bottom, those are our OST tutors. Those are Ohio State Test tutors. It's for third grade. We've done this for many years in each building. They will do some before-school or after-school, work with the students. The teachers typically do that, and they are able to really look at the skills that are needed for the students, and then work with them on those specific skills to try to prepare them for the spring test. So we do have that. And then the final, and D, is contract amendments. And those are just, contract amendments are those individuals that, for one reason or another, have had to ask for a deduct A and change their, their contract.
All right, any questions, comments for Mr. Herman? If not, need a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Jeff moves, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Lindsay seconds, Carrie, when you're ready.
Mr. Baden?
Yes.
Mrs. Happamire?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stamm?
Yes.
All right, that moves us to item number eight, Board Comment. Not sure if anyone has any. I would like to just share, I know it's from last month, but a lot of people read that we got to go through every building that we have. I'm sure a lot of you read some of our comments, but want to reiterate what Lindsay had shared and Shelley of what Mr. Herman, your leadership and things like that. And thank you administrators and staff for letting us walk through the building and disrupting your day for what seemed like only like a half hour, and Mr. Herman kind of getting everybody else a little off-schedule. Falling timbers building, especially, and that's cool. But it's okay. But no, it was, it was absolutely fantastic to be able to walk through and see everything. And with a little shakeup, I got to end in my son's school in Waterville, and she made it specifically important for me to see my son at the end of the day, so it made it extra special. But what you guys are doing is absolutely phenomenal. We cannot, even though it's Board Recognition Month, or whatever it may be, we can't thank you enough. We wouldn't be sitting here being able to do what we do without you guys, and was just absolutely incredible. I wish I could walk in and every day and, and see this. Fifteen minutes, twenty minutes wasn't enough to see all the incredible things you guys do, but it was awesome to just be able to take that in, so thank you guys again.
One thing, one, one of the topics that's been brought up has been the calendar over the last couple of weeks.
Yes.
Can you share with everyone where we're at with next year's calendar and looking at it?
And then also, it was over a year ago now that we approved the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. Yes.
Are we looking at twenty-six, twenty-seven?
What hap, how that worked was after, so for a year ago, they decided to, you know, to have a committee to actually develop the calendars. How it's always been in the past is that they would, there would be a calendar developed, and then typically given to staff members to vote on, both AWEA and OPEC. They wanted to have more of, work together on the calendar more, and so they did develop, a committee was developed. It had representation from all the buildings, it had representation from both AWA and OPEC on it. And they looked at a lot of different calendars. They looked at a lot of different, you know, hey, let's try this, what about this, if we do this. One of the goals that they had was to have a little bit of a later start. Now, when you're developing the calendar, the things that always have to be kept in mind is you have to, you know, you're trying to keep your quarters about the same length, you're trying to keep your semesters about the same length. You also are trying to have, you know, things that we think are important, you know, the found that we really enjoy, the Thanksgiving or the fall break. Typically trying to work towards a two-week break at Christmas time. That didn't happen this year, and so that did throw people... We're also having a, we have a later end time this year. We go further into June than what we have for quite some time. So, but when they developed the committee, they decided because they were putting a committee together to do that for two years. It was always typically done one year at a time. It was done around December, January, that they would do it, and it would be for the next year. I know that because this calendar is very different than what they have been in the past, I have spoken with AWA, and will be spoken, speaking with OPEC, to be able to look like, to look at, how do you like this calendar at this time? You know, are you happy with this calendar? You haven't, they haven't, we haven't gotten all the way through it. But to be able to revisit as a committee, and revisit the calendar, and discuss, you know, what things have been very positive, what things maybe do you not find as positive? If we need to make any adjustments to the calendar for next year, now would be the time to do so. And so I have had those conversations. We actually have, I have a meeting scheduled with AWA for next Tuesday, the fourteenth, to discuss the calendar, and so a couple of other items.
Okay. I looked at the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar, it doesn't appear we have that same issue over the Christmas break.
No, we do not, and we have a two, we have a full two weeks, because, and also because of Christmas being one day later, so then it's this Thursday and Friday. And so we do have a full two weeks next year, but we do still go late, you know, quite a bit past Memorial Day. Thank you.
Did you have anything, sir? I thought you were going to talk. Good deal. Moves us into our ninth item of recognition of visitors. I don't believe we had anybody. Do we have anybody who would like to speak? If not, fantastic. Where can I go then, into item number ten, which is Executive Session? We're going into Executive Session to consideration of appointment, of employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Trying to be very official now, this new year.
Yeah.
If I have a motion to approve, we can enter Executive Session.
I will move.
Shelley's going to move, Mike seconds.
I will second.
And when you are ready.
Mr. Baden?
Yes.
Mrs. Happamire?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stamm?
Yes.
And that's entering at seven fifteen.
Thank you guys for coming, we're not going to have any action after this, so you're more than welcome to go home.